For, this is due to the COVID pandemic emergency and so during the roll call, ask people to please identify where they are with the township and county in which they're located as well as indicate that they are present. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Present Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Palmer?
Present Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Flintoff, I'm present Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Corte?
Present Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Jerome?
Present Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel?
Present Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
Vogel?
I hear Syo Township, Washtenaw County.
All here.
Great, and the next is the adoption of the agenda. And there are a couple of changes. One is to add to the consent agenda, an additional item, I guess it would be H6, which is a resolution indicating that Syo Township recognizes a particular charity, his eye on the sparrow, I believe, as a local organization. This is a necessary step for them to receive a state permit to hold an event. And the other is a request I received sort of just before the meeting to change item I2 under unfinished business to a discussion item rather than a possible action item. So that would be the ordinance amendment agricultural, commercial tourism business. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Would someone like?
I'll move the agenda as amended.
So we have a motion by Jerome?
I'll support.
Support by Noel. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corte?
Yes.
Jerome? Jerome, did you say yes? Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
And Jerome?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion, agenda adopted as amended.
Great, thank you. The next item is approval of the minutes and we have three sets of minutes. And I guess the question is, are there any changes to any amendments or changes to the amendment, to the minutes? If so, then we probably should go through them, meeting by meeting.
I just had, oh, sorry, Alec has his hand up, Will.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Go ahead, Jessica, you can start.
I just had a correction on May 11th, meeting page four, J4. The motion was read twice, so there's a couple clarifying words, doesn't change the meaning. Second line, administration of Syo at Syo Township, along with the Board of Trustees. And then the last sentence of the motion, the supervisors hereby directed to retain the services. That was an error, it's arrange the services, has no change to the meaning.
Okay, so that's a change, a proposed amendment to the minutes for May 11th. Are there any other changes or amendments to the minutes? I don't see any. Oh wait, treasurer Palmer.
And Donna, Donna, you are muted.
I had earlier sent a memo to my fellow members with a copy of the motion that I made on J4. And reading over and then right now some clarifying language that the clerk just did. I am good with the way this will read now.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other amendment? Trustee Jerome?
I just want to express, I don't have specific changes. I do want to express just a few concerns I have with the minutes as presented. And I know this is probably better subject matter for a future meeting when I hope that we can address agenda, minutes, rules of order and the like. But I did want to point out that I have problems with the public comment. I really think that the comments need to be objective and minimize the personal content that's been captured in some of them. As well as previously, I discussed correspondence and answers to correspondence that we've received. Another thing that I'd like to point out, and this is probably for another, so I'm trying to be quick about it, is I'm very remiss that that place where we have the least information is at the reports from the board, which I think carries some of the most important information for the public. And yet we summarize it, and this is just a device that we've used. But I would hope that hopefully in the future, maybe we can provide a written report for our board reports so that the public has a better idea of what we're working on things each and every other week that we meet. I was disappointed to review those. You know, because I'm just worried about the consistency overall. And another matter I'll mention just briefly with, and my problem with the public comment is on a number of the meetings, there is a, the capturing of one subject matter, meaning administration. And then, for instance, this had 13 people speaking, but five of them end with, among other topics. And I guess I'm concerned that there's the capture of a particular topic and not the other topics that these individuals have highlighted. So I just think for future meeting minutes, I think we need to be very purposeful in how we approach the public comment, how we approach correspondence, how we report board reports from the different, from Gellman, from Parks, from TAP, from LBC. And be very purposeful how we're doing these things. So I still have some major concerns with the minutes myself personally. But I just wanted to state that, thank you very much.
Trustee Vogel?
I want to echo some of that, but I also want to recognize the clerk for the significant effort it is to pull these minutes together, so thank you for that. It is also, almost by definition, an impossible job to try to objectively capture public comments. My concerns are similar to trustee Jerome with the underpinning of we've got to be consistent in what we do. Relative to public comments, I remember when we first started and trustee Corte raised the question, gosh, can we characterize public comments, so we have a record? And the response from the clerk at the time was, you know, we've tried that, it's almost impossible to get an objective description we can all agree on, so we chose not to do it. And so we began that way. And I actually really support that thinking. We're here to hear public comments, they are part of the record, the reporting of the meeting. Going forward, I would like to propose we don't attempt to capture public comment. It's impossible to do it objectively and fairly and inclusively. That's one issue. The second issue is relative to correspondence, I want to recognize how much effort the supervisor puts into responding to everything. And it seems like there was a time we included the response to a public comment, but then other times we don't. So again, I want to suggest we include public, we include the supervisor's response on the public comment. And I guess my third is, I would echo again what trustee Jerome is saying. This township is so fortunate to have the caliber and the effort that that happens in our boards and commissions. And that needs to be an ongoing part of the township record. And I really support a brief, it's a paragraph, it could be two paragraphs, some brief report from, from each board and commission. And without wanting to delay those, I would like to begin the process tonight of rules of order. And if it's reasonable, make a motion to do those three things. But I don't want to take a ton of time, if generally we agree with that, then we can take it to a working session where we're going to work on what rules of order. Done?
Trustee Noel?
Yeah, I think this merits more discussion. And I think it's better done at another time. There are different schools of thought on how much detail the township clerk should put into the minutes. And of course, all of you remember Nancy Hedberg had a bare bones approach. No detail was included at all, just the vote, the resolution and the vote. So we had asked Jessica a while ago to include a one-sentence descriptor so that we would have some sense of how people felt about different issues when people spoke in public comment. But there, there is no way she can fully capture that. So it's something they need to discuss fully. In terms of the supervisor responding to public, or the letters correspondence from our residents, that's never been done, and I don't think that's necessary. In our packet, if he wants to respond, which he often does, that's fine. But if we're going to have one board member responding, then we're probably going to need to have other board members have the option of responding too. And I think that's going to become potentially overly cumbersome.
And could I, if I could, just point of order, this is really about the corrections to the minutes at this point, not the correspondence or the reports. And I would welcome from Jane, Alec, or anybody else, any specific, you know, corrections to these, you know, public comment or any other portion.
Are there any other corrections to these meeting minutes? If they're, trustee Vogel?
I will state, I am not comfortable with how public comments are characterized. But for the sake of us moving forward, I'm just going to have that noted. And I am willing to go ahead with the approval of these minutes with the understanding that there's an important conversation to be had about at least those three issues.
Are there any further corrections to the meeting minutes?
I don't have any corrections, but I would, I would say as, as the author, you know, I, of course, I feel I shouldn't have to say this, but will say, of course, do try to be fair and balanced and, and never perfect and, and welcome, you know, the future discussion.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes as, well, I guess we have one amendment to the minutes. Trustee Noel?
I'll move it.
Moved by Noel?
I'll support.
Support by Palmer? And then, just to be clear, this is a motion to approve all three sets of minutes?
Yes.
Okay, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Corte? Corte?
She's frozen.
Yes.
Oh, okay. You were very still for a moment. Jerome?
No.
Noel, yes. Vogel? Vogel?
Yes, yes, hesitation.
Motion passes 6-1.
Okay, the next item is communications to the Board of Trustees. And I would like to make a brief comment on this item before we move on. And that is, I'd like to address the topic of the East Delhi Railroad Street Road Improvement Special Assessment District, which is something that has generated a lot of correspondence recently and phone calls. This is a neighborhood-led project that began with discussions predating my start as supervisor in November of 2020. And it began when several neighbors asked to pave dirt roads, railroad street, and a portion of East Delhi. The practice of the township in these situations is to advise the organizers, that is, the neighbors who are proponents of a special assessment district, on what steps they need to follow in order to initiate an SAD. In this case, there is active opposition to the idea of road improvement, of a road improvement SAD in this neighborhood. And unfortunately, the proponents and the opponents are now very angry with each other. People have made accusations and it has become personalized. And all of this back and forth has occurred, and there hasn't even been a formal petition for a special assessment district. So this is an important point, the township has not taken a position on this SAD. Indeed, it is only a proposal for an SAD at this point. The petition would have to be presented to the Board of Trustees and receive a majority of the trustees' votes before there would be an actual special assessment district. So the organizers are hosting a meeting at 4:00 PM on Sunday, June 13th. And I had hoped that such a meeting would allow the two sides to talk things through. An opponent of the SAD wrote to the Board of Trustees and asked who from the township would be present at that meeting. And I responded by email that I would be there and that I planned to listen to both sides. And I added that I hoped to help the neighborhood to come back together. Because I hadn't yet communicated with proponents about my plan to attend, I forwarded my email exchange to them. My intent was to share information. Unfortunately, because the original email was part of the thread, this resulted in an email reply that criticized the other resident. And this is the opposite of my intent. And I regret that my forwarding of the email exchange led to more negativity and bad feelings. The fact that all emails to the Board of Trustees are public record and no new information was revealed in terms of personal contacts doesn't change the reality that I inadvertently added more fuel to the conflict. I hope that we can all step back from the personal attacks, assume that everyone has good intentions, even those, and perhaps especially those with whom we disagree. So with that, communications to the Board of Trustees.
Sure, a lot of them here on a variety of topics. We've gotten about 10 more, which I'll include in the next meeting packet. I won't read those at this time. And we also, special thanks to Pam Boyd, who dropped off a whole book for all of us. So thank you, Pam, and everybody else for your, your contributions and good counsel.
Well, with that, it brings us to public comment.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Noel?
Yes, I just had a follow-up question, Will, on what you were referring to. We, the entire board, got an email today on this issue. And there was reference made to a meeting that's going to occur tomorrow regarding the roads. Do you know anything about this?
Well, there is a meeting scheduled with some members of the staff of the Washtenaw County Road Commission. And one of the topics of that meeting is to explore the road commission's sort of, I guess, views on this, on that project. That's one of several topics that I expect will be a part of that meeting. But it's, it's kind of a meeting with the road commission, I don't know what to call it.
Who's going to be in attendance?
I don't know all of the people from the road commission who will be there. I expect Matt McDonnell will be there. He's sort of the regular point person on, on almost everything with the road commission. It's possible that others like Cheryl Sidle may be there. And beyond that, I am not sure. You know, they, they sort of bring in whomever they think is relevant to whatever the topic is. And I'm still learning all of the players over at the road commission. In addition to myself, I expect Lou Kitter will be there.
So are there any residents who will be in attendance?
I don't know of any residents who are going to be in attendance. The, we, I, I don't think any, are you asking like, are the organizers of this particular, no, I don't, they're not, they're not included in this meeting. This is not meant to be sort of at that level, I guess you could say. Do you have more questions or?
What time is it?
11 o'clock, I think.
Is it Zoom?
I assume so, yes.
Okay, I may talk to you about it later, thanks.
Okay, and treasurer Palmer?
Yes.
I saw your.
I was wondering if the meeting was specific to this SAD issue? Or is this their regular meeting they have? I think they have it once a month at least.
This, no, this is not, this is not a regular meeting. I think this, this issue prompted it, but I actually, almost every time I talk to the road commission, I have a list of things that I want to talk about, so.
Okay.
This may be the top of the agenda, but I always bring more items that I want to find out about.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Until we move on to public comment then. So this public comment, this is the time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees, including any items on this agenda. Later throughout the meeting, I'll ask for a public comment on each item on this agenda for possible action. If your public comment is on a possible action item, then you may comment later when the item is discussed by the board. Or if you prefer, you may speak on that action item now. I ask that you raise your Zoom hand to be recognized. Board of Trustees members, obviously this doesn't apply to you, but I hope you will raise your actual hand. At least I can see your hands, you can't see mine, but that's okay. Trustee Noel, I'm looking to you to be our timekeeper, is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, and so when there are 30 seconds remaining in the three minutes, then trustee Noel will give us a signal of time, of that the 30 seconds are remaining. And then when the time is up, another signal. And out of fairness, when the time's up, we ask that people bring their comments to a close. I would ask that no one be interrupted during his or her comments. That all remarks should be addressed to the moderator and not to any individual. Members of the public will each be given one opportunity to address the board on any one issue. Public comments are not an opportunity for back and forth dialogue. However, at their conclusion, a member of the Board of Trustees may ask for recognition from the moderator to respond to a question of fact. Although we cannot help but have some repetition, please try to avoid reiterating the same points which were made by previous speakers. Please do not involve personalities, be as factual as possible. And to the trustees, I will add the reminder that we should avoid personalizing our comments or ascribing motives to others. We are responsible for listening respectfully. That means our facial expressions and body language should not communicate either agreement or disagreement with what other speakers are saying. Neither should we make sounds or speak to show support or opposition to others' comments. And when we are in roll call for votes, it is time to say yes or no. Addition of further comments at that point is not appropriate. With that, are there any public comments?
Sure, and Will, one technical note, I just sent another invitation to you to your Gmail, if you want to try that. And I can call on the public, will you troubleshoot that?
Okay, I'll give it a try.
Okay, great. First up, I see Bonnie Gorishan, followed by Rob Pattinson. Bonnie?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Bonnie.
Hi. Good evening, my name's Bonnie Gorishan. I live at 2430 East Delhi Road in Syo Township. And this is an East Delhi Road issue, but it's on the other end from the SAT. I represent a group of East Delhi neighbors. We want to alert the board to an issue that will be coming up soon for a vote. It's a request for a private road variance from a developer. The road would be built at the East Delhi immediately north of Red Hawk Lane and before Holden Drive, about a quarter mile north of Miller Road. Purpose of the road is to, so three residences can be built on a hill immediately above Honey Creek on about 20 acres. It would be an 1,800-foot gravel class B or C private road along an existing 2,300-foot easement. Normally, a class A paved road would be required because it exceeds 1,000 feet. On May 24th, the planning commission recommended the board grant the variance as a class C contingent on fire department approval or a class B. The road would be constructed on an existing driveway for 1,000 feet. The new road down a steep slope for the additional 800 feet to a T turnaround. There'd be 500 feet left undeveloped to the end of the easement at Honey Creek. The road would service a total of nine parcels. Three have existing residences, three parcels are undeveloped, and then the proposed three new residences. DTE uses the entire easement to service 40,000 volt power lines in Ann Arbor. Because of these steep slopes that the T turnaround, the developer proposes to build permanent structures for erosion control consisting of up to seven feet of retaining walls to the north, 10 feet of fill to the east with 8% grades, and sediment retention basins to the east and south to contain runoff. This would be a huge structure. On the west end, the road will cut off up to 22 feet of two of the existing residences' front yards and will have three large storm retention basins. The 66-foot wide easement would be essentially clear-cut. 37 trees will be removed, including seven landmark oak trees, five at East Delhi Road itself. All of the six parcels on the easement object to the private road and refuse to pay for maintenance. Many adjacent parcels along Red Hawk and North Wagner Road also object. Nearly 500, pardon?
30 seconds, sorry.
Nearly 500 people have signed a petition objecting to the development. We forwarded you two letters that were sent to the planning commission detailing the basis for the objections. These have to do with issues with the road itself, such as loss of our neighbors' front yards, loss of trees, flooding and blocking access. Basically, we're asking you to please review the letters that we've sent in that detail all the issues so that you can inform yourselves, so you can make a reasoned decision about whether to grant the variance. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next up is Rob Pattinson, Rob?
Thank you. I would like to be part of the road commission meeting tomorrow. This is the very thing that I asked to be part of several weeks ago with meetings related to the roads issues. So if that is possible, the clerk has my contact info, but please include me in tomorrow's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Any other interested public, please raise your Zoom hand. We have 45 attendees tonight, Jillian Carey, Jillian?
We have 45 attendees tonight. Jillian Carey. Jillian?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're quiet, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm trying to figure out.
There you go.
Okay. Well, my comment is about, I read through the packet and I I noticed the, there's an AMI cell proposal, and this is for the township manager administrator to look for one. And so what I wanted to say is regarding this Township Administration Committee, the board had originally approved for that to come to fruition and for the Administration Committee to work together and to provide one proposal. Well, it didn't work out that way. There has been two proposals, and one was rejected and the other one accepted in spite of 75% of the residents that spoke were against the manager model. So I want to hold the board accountable to your choice, your decision to create that Administration Committee and to have one proposal by having that whole committee work together. If we can't have a committee, a whole committee work together, how do we expect our board to work together? You are here to work for residents and the township, and residents make up the township. Please go back and have that admin committee work together and show us that you really care about our township and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. Next up is Caroline Altmar, followed by Kim Phillips. Caroline?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi Caroline.
Hey. Hi, thank you very much. I also want to add my voice that I would like to participate in the County Road Commission meeting tomorrow at 11:00. And what would be the best way if giving you my email address so that I can get a Zoom link, Jessica, I would, that would be happy to do so.
Thank you. Thank you, Caroline. Next up is Kim Phillips, followed by Leanne Phillips. No. Kim?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Hathaway sharing a resident's email and correspondence with another resident without their knowledge or permission is deeply concerning. He says he has good intentions, but regardless of the intention behind it, it ended up causing a great deal of harm, and he still has not come forward to issue an apology directly to the person who was harmed by his actions. That said, the letter he referenced wasn't about the harm that was caused to a single person. It was written to show the harm caused to an entire neighborhood due directly to poor township leadership. A group of our neighbors want to pave roads in our neighborhood by using a SAD, and they are well within their rights to do so. The division we've been experiencing are not because our neighbors want a SAD. They are the direct result of misguidance provided by Seale Township leadership and from unappointed township representatives in advising this pro paving group on how to push this SAD through, that's a quote, even if there is significant opposition. The pro paving group does not represent the majority of residents. 28 of the 30 public road residents are opposed to this SAD. According to Public Act 188, only those homeowners with frontage get to vote on what happens to their roads in a SAD. Despite all this, still the advice from the township representatives has been to keep pushing this SAD through. Seale Township has supported the pro paving group for two years, advising them behind the scenes and even advised that public road residents be excluded from the initial planning phases. We alerted Supervisor Hathaway about this in writing in December, asking for help and inclusive meetings with all residents, but he did the opposite and got more involved to help the pro paving group. Even now, the township continues to mislead the pro paving group, telling them private road residents can still vote on public roads and encouraging them to keep pushing this SAD through. This demonstrates the clear pro paving bias of our township. According to Seale's own SAD process guide, the first step in a SAD is to gather the whole community with the township to assess support and field questions, but the township has gotten way ahead of its own process. Seale Township and the Washtenaw County Road Commission already offered $100,000 towards our SAD without board approval. An engineer contract was issued between Seale Township and Washtenaw Engineering in December, and Lou Kidder recently advocated to the Washtenaw County Road Commission to expand our SAD even further. Not even the pro paving group has expressed interest in this, all before a community meeting to assess support has even happened. Once again, the township-supported approach demonstrates a clear bias. According to Michigan Township Association, township officials are supposed to be neutral in neighborhood-initiated SADS like ours. Why is Seale Township not being neutral with our community, and why is Lou Kidder, who has no standing as a board-approved township representative and is not a member of our neighborhood, been given a position of authority in this SAD process? He has no standing here. The saddest part of this whole situation is that if the township had followed its own recommended process of assessing community interest first, all of this could have been avoided. Had they done this, our neighborhood would have been spared great division and difficulty, and Seale Township would have stewarded its precious time and resources more wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next up is Leanne Phillips. No. Leanne? I'm sorry, Leanne? Leanne, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Leanne Phillips, and I too would like to be a part of the Washtenaw County Road Commission meeting tomorrow. I am a resident in this proposed SAD, and I'm having a little bit of an echo. Can you hear that? Because I can't hear myself. Could I pause my time for just one moment, please?
Yes, we'll come back to you. Thank you. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg. Jonathan?
Hi, this is Jonathan, 6250 Park Road. Appreciate the comments by Kim Phillips prior to myself, almost word for word what I was going to say, and in the interest of time, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Leanne Phillips, no. You're the last, last hand up, so I'm coming back.
Okay, great, I'll start again. Thank you. So I I just wanted to to share. I, when all of this started in our neighborhood in October, when this proposal was first introduced to the HOA-only group within this proposal, I reached out to the Michigan Township Association because I couldn't understand how this very biased experience was happening. And according to them, township officials are always supposed to be neutral in neighborhood-initiated SADS. And I learned that many townships will not even provide SADS at all because of the exhausting time, the resources, and the embroiled conflicts that often result, as I think we're now seeing. But what they said is at first, it's critical, townships always want to know if there's a supermajority of support, so you all are not pitted against us, and precious time and energy is not wasted in a process that will ultimately fail. And it's just been so disheartening to learn that Seale Township volunteer representatives have been coaching a very small group of affluent families, the most affluent families, that it's been two years since a pro paving stance has been taken, and it's, we just can't understand how it happened, how our own written SAD process says for Seale Township, the community meets as a whole to see if there's interest, but instead Seale is on step three, funding, engineering, and it's not right, and our community has been torn apart because of it. And I just want to say also, Seale Township has been placed in legal jeopardy because the neutrality has been violated. And I, many of us really feel that the board should press pause on all of the SADS and really take a deep breath and look at what's happening because I I met a neighbor yesterday who said she is considering initiating a class lawsuit because the pro paving stance has been put out for two years. And so I just, I want to ask, I think it's fair to us, to our SAD, that Mr. Lou Kidder and Mr. Hathaway recuse themselves in our SAD. They have demonstrated bias that is unethical, and it's, it's our community is left to live with the mess. And it's incredibly heartbreaking because we were deeply harmonious. And I actually can't sleep at night right now because it has reached such unethical level. And so I I just want to share that from my heart. I I believe we deserve a neutral representative, and Mr. Kidder and Mr. Hathaway are going to be at that June 13th in alliance with our pro paving neighbors. They have created the agenda together, and they are speaking. So if you all can please come on June 13th, we would appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Leanne. I see no further interested public. Back to you, Will. Will? Everyone, he is still here. He's just having trouble being unmuted.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, Will.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. I just want to respond to a matter of fact. I have no idea what the agenda is. I did not have anything to do with the meeting on the 13th. I hadn't even indicated that I was going to attend until I received the email from, actually from an opponent of the project, and that is so I I don't know what the, you know, what their plan is for the meeting, other than I I thought it was to bring everyone together to talk about the plans for, you know, the proposal for the SAD. So just to clarify. Moving on to reports. The first report is from the Fire Chief.
Sure. And Andy, I will bring you in. Will, I want to point out Jane had her reel hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed it. Sorry.
And Jane, sorry, let me unmute your audio here.
I'm muted.
There you go.
It's unusual to make a comment after public comment, but I really do want to speak to this issue because I I share the concern about neutrality. And while I respect the historic role of Mr. Kidder, as a board member, I need to request that we recognize he does not have a township sanctioned role, and it is inappropriate to have any kind of an advocacy perspective from a resident really not adjacent to the roads under consideration. And I would like us to consider exactly this advice, to put a pause on the SAD until we can get a roads committee up and running again, if that's the right way to go, and be very clear about what the process is, and be able to confirm to our residents that the township is Switzerland. We are in a neutral role. So I'm not going to formally turn that into a motion, but I want us on notice. We got a little housekeeping to do on this one.
I couldn't agree with you more, Jane.
And I agree with you, Jane.
Chief Hood?
We're not asking if you agree, chief. We're ready for the report.
I just got to figure out where it's at. Okay. Everyone can see what I pulled up there? I did this right? Excellent, I'm getting good at this. May 2021, we responded to 78 incidents. And there's a list by category. Two fires, medical EMS calls, car accidents, 51, majority of our work most of the time. Mutual aid statistics, we requested mutual aid four times. Three of those times were for areas that had joined Dexter. We have an automatic aid agreement with them that when they get one of those calls, since they're so much closer, they respond. One time was for a kitchen fire on Erie Drive. No significant incidents within the month. Our fire investigation team investigated two fires, a kitchen fire on Erie Drive and a vehicle fire on Chestnut Imperity and Seale Farms Estates. Response time data, looks like this month our, our call processing time was higher than we'd like to see. Our, our time when we receive the alarm till, till we arrive, average of 5 minutes 54 seconds. And for the year so far, this is our high number, 60% of our responses were under six minutes. Breakdown of incidents by month. Nothing stands out here as too significant. We're a little bit slower in the month of May. And this chart used to be one, but I broke it down into, as I was getting too difficult to read. So the top line on the, on the chart on the above is the same as the top line on the below chart. So only thing really to notice in this is about 24% up on calls year-to-date. May response comparison year-over-year, pretty consistent with previous years. Responses per zone in 2020. My apologies, that's 2021. Our southeast corner continues to be pretty busy for a small area, west side, 203 responses, and our north and east side of the community, 85. I threw this heat map in there that we would get from our reporting software, kind of give you a visual of where we're actually responding to. And as one might expect, and you'll probably hear this again, but our areas with higher population densities see higher numbers of calls. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Chief, did you want to make any updates on, on staffing changes at the fire department?
Not quite yet. I'll have something for you next month, though.
Perfect.
All right, thank you, and I'll see you later, board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next, the next report is on Gelman. Trustee Noel?
Yes. We had a court hearing on Thursday, May 27th. And during this court hearing, Judge Connors ruled in favor of the interveners and agreed to enter the interveners' proposed order. This order was on the prior hearing and the terms that had been set at the prior hearing. So the order stated that this was not a final order, meaning Gelman does not have a right, an appeal by right to the Court of Appeals. If they choose to appeal to the Court of Appeals, they have to apply for leave to appeal. Gelman is to immediately implement all activities outlined in the Fourth Amendment consent judgment. The consent judgment was attached and incorporated by reference with this order. There will be quarterly hearings in front of Judge Connors to review the progress of response activities and consider the implementation of additional response activities. And the intervening plaintiffs retained their status as interveners. So this order was entered on June 1st, and Gelman has filed a notice for a hearing for a stay of proceedings at the circuit court level for June 17th. We just learned about it yesterday. Yesterday, also, the interveners sent a letter to Gelman requesting that they begin the response activities or begin to implement a work plan as outlined in the Fourth Amendment CJ. So we will be waiting to hear what happens. Gelman has to first appeal to the circuit court before they can proceed on to the Court of Appeals. But it is our understanding they're going to be proceeding on to the Court of Appeals. They filed a brief this afternoon. We just got their brief this afternoon. On another issue, there is going to be some well testing in late June in Seale Township. These will be drinking water wells. Most of them are on the perimeter of what is thought to be the plume or they're in question. They've been identified as potentially significant sites by Dan Bicknell, our consultant. And a couple of them were resident-generated. They wanted their wells checked. We're going to be using the 522 method, which is a very sensitive method for detecting dioxane in groundwater. dioxane in groundwater. The county uses a different method. It's not as sensitive. So we're going to see if there are any differences between some of the readings obtained previously by the county when they've done their testing and our readings with this new, with the 522 method. So that's going to happen in late June. Thank you. That's it.
Thanks. Supervisor's report. There's some information, written information provided in the meeting packet. I also want to add, we've now scheduled a special meeting for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of assessor. This is on Thursday, June 10th, from 6:00 to 9:00. And because there will be, this is a special meeting because this is when the Board of Trustees will be conducting interviews with candidates. And members of the public are welcome to attend and observe that meeting if they choose. Also, I wanted to share, we didn't have time for it in our meeting tonight, but at the next meeting of the Board of Trustees on the 22nd, I have invited a representative from the county to make a brief presentation about a residential recycling grant project that will be conducted throughout the county, but in particular of interest to Sciop Township, there will be sort of data gathering about residential recycling and kind of recycling education program that will be going on. And so we'll have more information about that. There's also an article, there'll be an article in the upcoming newsletter, but this will be an opportunity to learn more about that, that project. The items that are covered in the materials, there was a meeting, a public meeting held on the Park Road paving project that will be started by the developer of Trailwood Subdivision during this current construction season. And there was an opportunity to discuss with interested residents the possibility of extending that paving effort through possible SAD and other funding means. It was well-attended. There was a lot of good questions. We had more questions than we had time for, but we're looking for a way to sort of extend that conversation in the future. And then I wanted to introduce the search process for the township administrator. This is the effort that was initiated by the motion that we were discussing earlier during the May 11th meeting. And I invited our HR consultant, Diane Benson, to come and give sort of an update on where things stand with that particular search.
Good evening, everybody. Like Will said, I was going to share a little bit about the search process. Included in your agenda packet is a copy of the proposal. So it is a lengthy proposal that you can take a look at. We have engaged Amy Sell and her team to provide support to the search for the township administrator. First, to let you know, I have been involved in several executive searches while I was at the University of Michigan, where we use search firms. So I'm very familiar with the processes that happen when you work with a search firm. This particular firm has been in existence since 2015 and has conducted several searches in both the public and private sector. And they have experience working on searches for local and state municipalities. And there was a list in there of some partial searches that they have conducted. And the firm understands both FOIA and the Open Meetings Act. I spent some time last, the other day, talking with Amy Sell and some of her team members about the process. And some of the items that we talked about were the stakeholder interviews, which is the first part of what the process is. And that is gathering information from elected officers and staff, as well as other representatives, to find out what they want in a township administrator. What are their desires? What are their thoughts about it? With that information and other information that we have provided, the firm will be developing a final job description and recommending compensation and benefit structure. Now, we are providing lots of information to them to help them with that process. There will be marketing of the position, using different websites, different social media, et cetera, and they'll take care of all of that. Then there will be screening and assessment of candidates. That the firm will first screen candidates. They will talk about, we talked about interviewing logistics, how, whether or not we'll still be interviewing via Zoom. And perhaps there's time for the, perhaps the final candidates will do a public presentation as well. The Amy Sell firm also takes part in the negotiation process and helps with the transition of the candidate that is selected. Now, that candidate could have other things involved beyond what we originally had scheduled with her. And one of those is if we, and this would be our decision, and it could be part of a negotiation, if we want to provide some support for a spouse to find a job, if we want to provide some relocation expenses, if they're coming from afar, along our area. Now, those we do not have to do, but those are some other things that they have experience in. And once the person is on board, they also include a 360 feedback check-in at a point in the future. So there is a timeline, which we are a ways out from meeting that right now, but I am working to develop the stakeholder list and provide additional materials to Amy and her team. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Next up is the clerk's report.
Sure, just very briefly. A reminder, at our next meeting, we'll have a public hearing on the Compensation Commission and a proposed action on the Compensation Commission ordinance. Also, we want to thank something that's in the consent agenda, but just want to give a shout-out to Asmat Nori and Marginep, who have both volunteered to serve on a committee to help us select an IT managed services provider to be our new IT person, once Jim Murdy has left. So thank you to both of them. We hope to come back on June 22nd with a recommendation on that. And we are undergoing our annual audit with Plant Moran. So all of you receive the letter from the auditor as members of the board over these two weeks. They are working very hard. Thank you to Sandy Egler, our finance director, Woodhill, all the staff that are providing information. And once that's all wrapped up, along with the OPEB annual evaluation, also in the consent agenda, they, of course, will provide a full report to the board when that's all buttoned up. That's all.
Thank you. The treasurer's report. Donna, you're muted.
I apologize. I don't usually do that, so. This is the time of year that we are preparing the road and getting ready for me to send everybody that gift you get first in July and then in December. It's tax time again. I can't believe we're here. We just finished the last one. So that right now is taking up the time. As the clerk stated, we've been involved in providing information for the audit. It's, everyone has a piece of that. So that's pretty much what's been going on the last few weeks in our office.
Thank you. The next report is the Planning Commission, trustee Corteau.
Thank you. So as you might, oh, I'm getting a message that my internet is unstable, so I might just switch to audio only.
We can hear you just fine.
As you can see later in the packet, the Planning Commission is pleased to have a draft master plan ready for distribution to board members, residents, and neighboring communities. And we, of course, welcome comments. Public input sessions revealed a lot of interest in embracing environmental sustainability. And so the P, the Planning Commission has both strengthened the language in the master plan and is starting a task force to develop an environmental sustainability and action plan, sorry, climate action plan. We welcome nominations of people interested in serving and people who wish to nominate themselves to volunteer. If you are interested in serving on the commission or know of somebody who might be, please send a letter of interest describing your interest and as well as your qualifications or resume and send that to Planning Commission Chair Jan Culbertson by July 12th. We also have two interns, master students from UVM School of Environment Sustainability, who have started working with us and are already making great progress in compiling information from neighboring communities to identify key measures that could be adopted here in Sciop. Of course, we don't want to reinvent the wheel. We want to build on and collaborate with our neighbors. So those are the two major things I will report on. As you know from many communications, there are other things that will be coming from the Planning Commission about the road variance issue, but I think that will be in another discussion.
Thank you. The next is Land Preservation Commission, which is also trustee Corteau.
Right, I also think I should just go, you know, segue right on in. Land Preservation Commission has not met since the last board meeting, so there is nothing new to report. They continue to evaluate properties. We've been, we've received several promising applications recently and continue to review properties and collaborate with theirs.
Thank you. The next report is the Transportation Alternatives Planning Committee report, trustee Vogel.
It would be me. Am I unmuted by chance? Yes. All right. Okay, so four things really quick. Very excited to report that the construction for Phase 3 of Z-Bro started this week, right on schedule, so that's all good. Because Phase 4 is so expensive, we have got a full court press on all sorts of funding options, including a follow-up with Representative Luzinski's office earlier today to see what's going to be possible in our work with her. Also, we're getting the last Ts crossed and Is dotted, moving the Parkland Plaza sidewalk slash pathway further south. Great partnership with Lake Stone Apartments. We laid out the route to be able to keep everything on the west side, which served those residents so much better. They're supporting us with the easement, with the routing. And then we're going to cross basically the entrance to their back parking lot and head right into Sciop View on the west side. And I want to recognize Linda and Mark Smith, Lombardo developers, they're thinking in really creative ways with us about how to continue to move this pathway toward liberty. Last point again, this pathway stuff is all about partners. And I want to recognize the Woodview PUD and our ongoing and close-to-done negotiations around community benefits, and they're just a great model. Without any details, because that's going to come later, I just want to recognize them as a great model and a partner for moving many things forward, including the pathway. That's it.
Thank you. Parks Advisory Board, trustee Jerome.
Well, in an effort to support my own suggestion, I will provide a Parkstep update and a written summation for the July 22nd meeting.
For the June 22nd meeting?
June 22nd, sorry. Next meeting, I'll provide a written summation of what we're working on, as well as a broadband update.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. That concludes the reports, I believe, and brings us to the consent agenda. There are six items on the consent agenda, because we added one. Is there a motion to move the consent agenda? Move by Vogel? Support. Support by Palmer? Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yep.
Motion passes.
Is it just me, or do we have some static happening here?
Yeah, static. You can hear it, too.
I don't care what the cause is. The next item is unfinished business. The first item is possible action to adopt Freedom of Information Act, FOIA policy and procedures, and appoint FOIA coordinator. And I'll turn to the clerk for introduction of this agenda item.
Sure. So this is an agenda item. There's a lot in here. It's all required for any public entity. And even though it's a lot of paper, it doesn't change any of the fundamental practices that we have long done and continue to do. So that's one point. I got some input from the treasurer and just confirmed with her that, you know, my practice is if I delegate part of the job to staff, which has always been done, any sort of sticky situations, unusual requests, denials, anything like that, I personally handle, just so we don't have staff in that position. Will and I spoke on a couple of items and, you know, clarified that Kristy Aiken, the office coordinator, has long been the primary staff person and will continue to be the primary staff person who handles all the typical ones. Most of them are about, you know, get referred to assessing or fire. Most of them are about properties and are really about property files. But of course, our IT director, soon our contractor, others get pulled in as necessary. We treat all requesters fairly. And typically, it's very rare that we have to ask for any extension, but we do have the right to, if it's going to take more than five days, have the right to ask for a 10-day extension. We do that rarely. We've never denied one. The reasons for denial are very few and far between. It would be if somebody is suing us or if there was something that was protected by law for a very narrow reason. That doesn't come up. Related to the FOIA fees, we have the right to request FOIA fees. We typically do not, because most of them are so small and so quick and are by the occasional resident. And so it's really part of the public service. If there's anything, my guidance to is typically Jim Murdy, our IT director. If there's anything that's going to take a lot of time, I say it's going to take more than an hour, then we spec out the cost and let the requester know what that will be. So the question tonight is just to update the FOIA procedures and guidelines. The last time we did this was in 2015, and things have changed since then. And so the MTA has suggested everybody update them. This is all approved by our township attorney. In the coming months, Mary Gillis, the deputy clerk, and I plan to offer a brief training on public records and FOIA for everybody. We're going to do a video recording, and it's really around three things that we think that every board member, staff member, committee member should know. One, what is a public record? Is it this post-it? Is it this text message? What is a public record? Two, your legal and ethical responsibilities related to public records. to public records? And three, how to identify a public records request or a FOIA request? That may sound silly, but it's not, because certainly requests, people don't have to come in and say, I have a public records request, I have a FOIA request. There are a lot of things that constitute such. And so we just want to make sure everybody can identify one, so that it gets kicked over to Christie for processing. And so with that, I would take any questions or, or suggestions.
Are there any questions or suggestions? Trustee Jerome.
Yeah, Jessica, and this is great. Can you just add, I had a couple concerns, and I just, and I'm sure you can address them. One is just, you know, knowing the importance of the FOIA requests. I would hope that I know that in the past practices have been to delegate to Chris, to Christie or administrative staff, but I would also hope that we would be integrating the deputy clerk as her role as deputy clerk to the clerk at some point in the future, hopefully incorporating her and her responsibilities with regards to FOIA.
Why is that, Alec?
Because it's the clerk's role, and the deputy clerk serves as the deputy to the clerk. So I was, you know, I, I want to make sure that, and this, it tags to another question. And one of the things that says the clerk will handle atypical requests. Can you, I know, I, can you help clarify what atypical is versus typical?
Absolutely. So typical request is a property file, typically environmental review. Is there an empty tank, building records? And, and Christie and Fran, because they're at the front desk and are working with, you know, builders all day, they are the ones who, who handle those directly and kick it over to fire assessing standard. The atypical request would be, for example, related to the railroad SAD, I don't think Lou would mind my sharing this, an atypical request would be when I have to ask Lou Kidder for some of his personal emails. And so, because they've been FOIA'd in his role representing the township as a township volunteer. And so in, in that, you know, sort of thing, I give a call, or I think on that same one, Will, there were some people whose emails were going to be shared, email addresses, and they had the understanding that their names could be redacted from a FOIA request. And in fact, it couldn't be. So kind of giving that kind of difficult news or guidance is something I would do directly. Rarely, I think we've had, we've had a few of them recently, because there's been issues with a lot of community interest. When it comes to emails, you know, certainly I go through and I make sure there's nothing from an attorney, nothing that's overly inclusive, and all of that. So those are the atypical ones.
Would it be possible, because I know, I can use them, I can use names as well, but administrative staff has graded what they've done and provided services for, would it be possible to clarify that they will be responsible for typical requests and that all atypical, and clarify what typical is within the structure of the FOIA? Like you just mentioned, you, you named off all the things that were typical, so that we know that those are the ones that are assigned specifically to administrative staff, and then all of the others would fall within the purview of the clerk. I'm just trying to make sure, and I know you've done this, but I'm just trying to make sure that, that there's, there's absolute clarity in terms of the response. And it also go, if you could spend just a minute explaining, I just want to make sure that the cost structure for anyone is the, the same. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't matter if it's applicant A or applicant B, but the cost structure should be structured as such that they would, A through Z would receive the same cost commensurate with the work done. And I, I'm pretty sure I, that's covered, but if you could just spend one minute clarifying that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So it doesn't matter if it's a corporation from Texas, or a resident down the street, a repeat resident from Ann Arbor, which we have a lot of, or a property owner in Syo. Everybody's treated the same, with one exception. And, and I will say, you know, in the, again, because they've been so small, I think the last time we had one that was going to take a few hours was related, it was before you all were on board, but it looks like it was going to take about four hours, estimated it, gave the cost estimate to the applicant, and they decided not to go ahead with it. And so it just, you know, and, and also the, the other aspect of it, too, is there is a provision that anyone can cite in the FOIA law to say, we request that the fees be waived because disclosing this information in the public interest. Everyone puts that in there, Alec?
Yep, I read that.
Everyone. And so I also, you know, typically, my, my position is, I'm not going to, you know, if we're talking about an hour or an hour and a half, I'm not going to start arguing about if it's in the public interest or not, if it's a resident who's, you know, making a request. So typically, we don't charge. If they start getting complex, the only time, you know, most everything's fulfilled by email or flash drive. We're not doing copying, we're not mailing. And so we do have a very prescribed way that we do calculate the costs and charge them. And if anybody, you know, hasn't paid, you know, we are able to require deposit.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'm trustee Noel.
Yeah, I wanted to offer some perspective on this, too. The township clerk is typically the FOIA coordinator in most townships. I was previously clerk. I was the FOIA coordinator for four years. During that time, I delegated to front office staff. I never delegated that work to my deputy clerk. I know that Nancy Hedberg, when she was clerk, I don't know what she did, but Jessica could comment on whether or not, when she was deputy clerk for Nancy.
No, it was not delegated to me.
I didn't think so. It's not typically done that way. And I, I will say that sometimes a very complicated FOIA request might require an attorney to help with it. Some can be extremely complicated, but it is not typical to delegate it to the deputy clerk.
That's fine. Thank you for that perspective. I, I'm surprised. If I had a deputy position, that's probably where I delegated to, but I'm, I can go with past practice. That's why I was asking the question.
Thank you, Alec.
Are there any, trustee Corto?
Thank you. I had a quick request for a clarification. I, I'm having a hard time tracking it down right in this moment, but I thought I saw somewhere that the standard practice is to retain a record of the requests for a year. I wonder if you could just tell us a little bit more about, like, is there any sort of just systematic tracking of, oh, we got X, X number of requests of this type and X of that type, as, just as a planning tool to, to sort of have an idea of, are these increasing? Are they decreasing? What do we have to account for? Can you just tell us a little bit more about sort of how you, how you track and, and keep track of those over time?
Sure. So we keep at least 12 months of every FOIA request response, including the PDF. We keep it, we were keeping it hard copy. Now we just keep it all soft copy, PDF requests. And in fact, just last week, our entire last 12 months of FOIAs was FOIA'd. So we also provided that. It's, I, I wouldn't say it's increasing. It's about 75 plus a year. They, they differ a lot. Most of them are related to properties. So I'd have to go look. I'll tell you one thing, Jackie, is, is I don't keep any more data than I am required to do. And so I don't have that off the top of my head. But I'm happy to go do a quick tally and chat with Christie and, and give you some, some information on that. And I would say something that's not captured in here are all the public records requests. That's something that we're not required to track, and we certainly don't want to start tracking. So if somebody comes in and says, hey, you know, could I look through the resolutions from 1987? I say, sure. And, you know, sit them down in the conference room, have people go through with pencil. They often take pictures of things. Or Fran has big planning boxes of files that people physically go through. So the FOIA requests are only the written requests that constitute FOIA. We definitely get many more requests that are public records requests. And we don't count those.
Thank you. That's helpful perspective.
Are there any more questions, comments on the FOIA item, or FOIA items, I should say?
I'll move the resolution.
Moved by Noel?
Right, sorry, point of order. Will, there are two, two motions, two resolutions?
Oh, all right. We should do them then separately.
We also need to do, I hate to say this, public comment.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for the reminder. This is our first action item that sort of caught me off guard. So why don't we make the motion, and then we'll have public comment? So trustee Noel, do you want to move, which of the resolutions do you want to move?
Just the first one.
So that would be FOIA policy and procedures?
Yes.
Trustee Corto?
I'll support that.
So we have a motion by Noel, support by Corto. Is there public comment?
I see none.
Okay. In that case, please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome? Jerome?
Yes.
I, I saw you say yes. Okay. Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion passes.
So on the second resolution, is someone prepared to move that? That would be the appointment of the FOIA coordinator. Lost Kathy. I bet Kathy was ready to do it, too.
Sorry. Had an interruption. Yes, I'll move it.
Okay. Moved by Noel. We have support for the resolution to appoint the FOIA coordinator. Look, I think Alec spoke, but I'm not sure.
I support.
Okay, support by Jerome. So is there a public comment on this resolution?
Please raise your Zoom hand if you're interested. I see none.
Okay. Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Resolution passes.
Brings us to item I two, which is now a discussion item. This is the ordinance amendment number 3421, agricultural, commercial, slash tourism business. This, just to provide a slight background, this was something that was considered by the Board of Trustees a year ago, and sent back to Planning Commission for further consideration with some specific suggestions from the Board of Trustees at the time. Planning Commission returned this to the Board of Trustees, but it was, I think, so close to the end of the term that it got lost in the shuffle. And so it was not approved by the Board of Trustees, and we're sort of bringing this back. And just prior to the meeting, there was some questions raised about some aspects of this. And so we were asked to turn this into a discussion item, so that there's an opportunity to sort of explore those questions. And I don't know what, what may result from that exploration. But trustee Noel, you raised some of these questions, so I'll turn to you first.
Okay, that's fine. So I was on the board previously, and I was one of the ones that sent this back to the Planning Commission. There were a couple issues. One related to the noise ordinance, and one related to the definition of a fully enclosed structure. So in the draft ordinance that we've received, we don't have all of the description wording that Doug Luhan had suggested in his report on page 153 regarding a fully enclosed structure. And I think that all of his terminology should be included in the ordinance. So for example, he is saying that a fully enclosed structure means anything constructed or erected, which requires a fixed location on or under the ground, a, that is walled and roofed. Any retractable walls, including all barn doors, must be closed prior to the start of any amplified music. Amplified music may not be played in any tent or other fabric temporary structure. These issues have been major issues at the party barns out on Syo Church Road, and we've had many resident complaints about sound and noise issues. So I think that his suggested wording would be important to include in the ordinance. And then we have the issue of the noise ordinance, which I think requires some time. I've asked trustee Corto if she would be willing to work with me, and probably Doug Luhan, on this issue, proposing a more comprehensive noise ordinance. We received an email today from a resident who attached the noise ordinance from Asheville, North Carolina, which I found very interesting. Couple years ago, I had done some research on noise ordinances and had gotten the noise ordinance from Dexter Township and another kind of semi-rural township in, in our area. So I think there's some work we could do on this issue, and Jackie and I are willing to do it. So that was part of why I proposed that this should be discussion only. It should not be voted on tonight. And there are some other issues, but they are smaller issues. But other people might see different issues.
Trust, excuse me, clerk Flintoff?
Just briefly, to piggyback on what you're saying, Kathy is a resource. Jim Fink and Conrad Seiler, you know, we're slowly going through our code as part of recodification. So would suggest if the board does want to dig into the noise ordinance, that we could have some support on that quite immediately.
Thank you.
Are there other comments? Trustee Corto?
Just to build on what trustee Noel said, in the recent Planning Commission sound, acoustic sound check that we did on a proposed event site, even the engineer who ran the test noted that we have a relatively vague and, someone say, too weak noise ordinance. And when we listened to some of the tests at the level that was allowable by our ordinance, there were some concerns. And then there was an opposing acoustic engineer who also offered some model ordinances. So I, I strongly believe that we do need to set a timeline and move forward on this, but that the noise ordinance has to go hand in hand with this. It really makes sense to do the two of them together. And another aspect of that really is monitoring and enforcement. There certainly are noise monitoring devices that could be purchased and put in place to monitor the noise, either on a complaint either on a complaint basis, on a random basis, as a requirement of a permit. There are a lot of things to explore about how that could be done. And it should be part of the application process that the charge for that equipment would be covered by the space. So I think there are a lot of possibilities to come up with solutions to help monitor better. But I think we need to be really clear and specific in coming up with those and specifying those possible solutions.
Trustee Noel?
One of the possibilities discussed by the prior board was purchasing of a decibel meter that could be used by the Washington County Sheriff. You know, we contract with the county sheriff. And if this was a service we wanted them to perform, I would think they could do that. But we would have to explore this if we want to do it. But that would allow for some standardization. It wouldn't be the individual homeowner kind of doing their own thing and saying, "It's great, it's fine," or the individual venue owner. Also, the sheriff is available at all hours. And many of these noise complaints come in, in the late evening. So we need to keep that in mind. It's a way to deal with enforcement issues going forward.
Are there further comments from trustees? Well, I'd just like to add that we do have a zoning enforcement officer and inspector. And we've started taking some steps with the existing venues to be a little bit more assertive in our enforcement in terms of gathering data and also communicating with the venue owners. So I think I'm open to, you know, engaging the sheriff's department in that. But in some ways, I think we've sort of, we've got a structure that we're, you know, trying to put in place and use that's more internal to the township government. I'd like to try that first before we start tasking the sheriff's department with the code enforcement. If there are no further comments, it seems like we sort of have a plan for how to move this forward.
Public comment?
Well, it's a discussion item, so I suppose we could.
My apologies.
We could. But, you know, perhaps we could leave that till the end and then if people want to comment on it, there will be a time to do so.
Agreed.
Okay, so with that, perhaps we can move on to new business. The next, so that would be item J1, possible action concurrents with the Lockalpines sanitary authority boards, authorities boards approval of settlement agreement and mutual release. And Jessica, I know you've been sort of pulling this together. Do you want to introduce this item?
Sure, I do briefly. Mostly I want to introduce our attorneys who are going to explain this to us. And I'm bringing in Kyle Kowinski. And I don't know if Matt Zimmerman's here, but Kyle is here as well as Jim Fink, so that the public understands. Hi, Kyle. Thank you for being here.
Hi. Thanks for having me.
And also Jim Fink is here, I think, just on audio if we need him. Briefly, the Lockalpines Sanitary Authority, LASSA, it crosses Webster Township and Syo Township. A long time ago, with some history I can't explain, both Syo Township and Webster Township came, became constituent municipalities of LASSA. So we are members. And when big things like settlements happen, Syo Township and Webster Township both have to concur with the LASSA board, who has already recommended to approve this settlement. And with that, I will turn it over to Kyle so he can explain the issue to us. Thank you, Kyle.
Sure, well, thanks for having me. My partner, Matt Zimmerman, he's not here. It's just myself. I'm a partner at Varnum based out of our Grand Rapids office. I've had the pleasure of working for LASSA and Syo Township and the other townships involved in this case for the past eight or nine years. The lawsuits themselves have actually been going on for about 20 years. So I only got involved about halfway. So there's a long history. And so I obviously can't give it all, but I can certainly give some basics and answer any questions you might have. About 20 years ago, the middle here on River Watershed, Ford and Belleville Lakes, there was what people thought was a green paint spill. And it actually wasn't a green paint spill. It was what's called nuisance green algae blooms. That prompted the Department of Environmental Quality at the time, under law, they were required to take certain actions to figure out, how do we get rid of these nuisance algae blooms? Because they're impairing these bodies of water. And what DEQ went out and did is they were required to do a study called a total maximum daily load. The total maximum daily load, as it implies, is the maximum amount of a pollutant that can go to a body of water until that body of water becomes impaired. And so they went out. It was crazy enough, it was a summer intern who they had go do it in 1996. And the intern came up with a, here's the X number of pounds per day that can come from Ann Arbor, Dexter, Chelsea, and Lockalpine. And that's the maximum amount that can come per day. And so dividing that up by how much you discharged, it allocated how much LASSA was able to discharge in phosphorus into the middle here on river. That was very problematic for a number of reasons and that's what prompted the lawsuits. The study was flawed, we challenged it, and there's been ongoing litigation ever since. Okay? One thing to keep in mind, over 20 years, wastewater treatment technology has changed significantly in both cost and process. And so it's gotten better. So even though limits and phosphorus limits may not have been achievable 20 years ago, they are more achievable now. And that's predicted to keep, you know, continuing on that trend in the future. All to say, as a resolution of the disputes in consultation with all the municipalities, with all of the municipalities' highly technical environmental consultants, everyone came to an agreement on terms that everyone could live with, both all of the municipalities and Eagle. And Eagle believes, Eagle is now, is what the Department of Environmental Quality is now called. And so Eagle believes with these limits, eventually these bodies of water will be fixed, to use a layman's term. And we also believe with our consultants, with each municipality, that these are limits, in the settlement agreement, the settlement agreement sets the limits on how much can be discharged. And we believe it's satisfactory and achievable such that we won't be out of compliance with our permits. That's, I probably glossed over a thousand things there and I'm sure it's a complicated issue. But if there's questions, I am happy to answer them in any shape or form.
And so everybody understands Kyle is LASSA's attorney. Also, our township attorney, Jim Fink, has recommended this. As well, the LASSA engineer and water operator have recommended approval.
Are there any further questions? Trustee Vogel?
So like Kyle said, there's probably a thousand sort of issues and considerations here. As a matter of process, as I understand it, our two Syo reps to this Lockalpine Sewerage Commission is Jessica and Will. So I would look to you guys to inform us on, are you recommending we approve this? To offer your perspective, so that we've got our reps offering a perspective on the situation.
Yes, I recommend approval. This settlement agreement itself, I think, has been almost finally negotiated for the two years that I've been involved in LASSA. And every member of LASSA has been looking forward to this being approved. So I would recommend.
That's helpful, that's helpful context, thank you.
I would concur. I would concur with the clerk. She's got much, much more knowledge of this than me because I only joined the LASSA board with my, the start of my term as supervisor back in December. So this was pretty much in its final stages when I came to the LASSA board. Trustee Corto?
Can you please help us understand what exactly are Syo's obligations? I mean, I understand that we participate in LASSA and so we are some, in some way, responsible for and party to their discharges and keeping control of them. But what exactly is Syo responsible for? And how does it exert any role in affecting what LASSA does?
Well?
Treasurer Palmer?
Just a history lesson, folks. Many years ago, Lockalpine, they always had their own system, as they do now. And my understanding was that it was becoming a, or had become, let's say, a disaster. And the state stepped in because it was not operating correctly. Lockalpine was starting to grow. And so LASSA, the board, was created through the state working with the community. And because it spans two townships, the supervisor and the clerk from both Webster and Syo were appointed as part of the board, the LASSA board. There are residential, I should say, resident representatives as well. And I'm not sure how many residents there are, though. The reps.
One from each Patrick McLaughlin is Syo Township's.
Okay, so there's one from each township that's a resident of the community and then the supervisor and clerk from each township. But that's how this all came about, the LASSA board.
And Jackie, to just underscore, I don't know all the history. I do know it was court action which requires it. And so we aren't just members. We, I know, I can say confidently, we have more responsibility for this. This is really, you know, part of why, you know, the LASSA bylaws require a constituent member, Webster and Syo, to both sign off on this. So, I mean, it would be a legal question for Jim Fink and a bit of history we'd have to dig into. But we are responsible jointly with Webster Township for the operation of LASSA.
Just to follow up, so my, I guess my question is, if Lockalpine were not living up to the terms of the agreement, what responsibility would Syo have? And how would we take action to ensure that the terms of the agreement are met? I just want to be clear on it, on what role we can be held to in this agreement.
Would you like me to jump in?
Please, thank you, Jim, I was looking for you.
Trustee Corto, I'll answer you the same way I generally answer the board after 8:30 at night when you ask a complicated legal question, which is, I'll get back to you. But what I will do right away is send to all of you a copy of the rules and regulations of LASSA, which are on the website, but I'll send them to you so that you have them. And then with a reminder of the clerk, the treasurer, and the supervisor, I'll send a short memo answering your specific question about what would happen if LASSA as an organization fell apart and what responsibilities would the township have.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Tom Winsky should know that that means I'll be calling him for advice.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Are there further questions or comments? Are there comments from the public?
I see one Zoom hand, Anne Streeter. Is that on this item? Anne Streeter?
Yes, this is Anne Streeter. Is this public comments now?
On the question of if we should approve the LASSA settlement. Is that what you want to speak on?
No.
Okay, hang tight. Any public comment on this item? I see none.
Okay, would someone like to make the model motion?
I'll move the model motion.
Moved by trustee Jerome?
Support.
Support by treasurer Palmer. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff? Yes. Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Resolution passes. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks for having me.
The next item is, it's not an action item. This is a discussion only presentation on the township water and sewer fees and the need for change. And we have with us representative from Woodhill, Colleen Cogan?
Cogan.
Cogan, sorry. And Steve Wigowski from our Township's Utilities Department to make this presentation for the board.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. Can you see my screen? Actually, let me start my video for a minute to say hello to everybody.
Hi, Colleen.
Hi. And I'm so sorry we're talking numbers after 8:30 at night, but we've hopefully, Steve and I have broken it down well. So can I share my screen?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so Steve, once this is up, I think you're on.
All right, yeah, we can see your screen, Colleen. So good evening. So the Woodhill, can you hear me?
Yes.
The Woodhill group has worked closely with Syo Township staff, myself, Sean Slane, and Matt Knapp to review our current financial practices and find opportunities for increased efficiencies and improvements. Ms. Colleen Cogan of Woodhill Group will make a PowerPoint slideshow outlining the issues uncovered in the corresponding financial remedies. You know, it's been quite a learning experience with, working with Colleen and her assistant, Michael, on learning what they've done with other communities. And I think they have a lot of great suggestions. So with that, let Colleen take it away with the PowerPoint presentation.
Thanks so much. You know, it's a pleasure to be here and meet all of you. I know that you've met a couple of my colleagues. And I have to tell you, I love working with your staff in the utility department. They're great people to work with. So Steve, just make sure that you jump in if I'm missing something, okay? When I talk about this. So let me just set the stage, everybody. And let's talk about what our objectives are. And I know that this is a new board from when we first came on. So the objectives that we had, we set prior to this current board. And, but we're still holding with them. And so I'm going to share them with you so that if you have any questions or have any suggestions, we can take that on board. So let's just set the stage. So, let's just set the stage about what we're looking at, we're looking at a half a million dollar loss a year that we need to address, this is a serious problem that SiO is having in their water and sewer department. So, if you can see, that you have an operating loss in water of 317,000, now this was actually your last, your fiscal year in 2020, I don't have your 2021 numbers yet, so, but you haven't increased your fees or done anything, things significant, so we expect this to be about the same. You had an operating loss in sewer of 495,000, so for a combined operating loss of 812. Now, what offset your operating loss are interest and investment income, so you can see what you have here, which brings us down to a grand total of 512,000. Now, let me explain that what we're looking at here is, these are the, the charges that your rates and your fees should cover. What's happening right now for SiO is that you are not covering the cost of your operations, and so all of your new properties that are buying a connection fee into your system, and you should be using that connection money to put aside for capital, because it's very, very expensive to run a water and sewer system, once it needs capital repairs, we should be setting aside these connection fees, they're buying a share of the system, buying a share of the infrastructure, what's happening is the connection fees are shoring up your cash flow, and so we need to, we need to take care of this. So our objective that we worked out with Steve and the supervisor and the clerk is that we're going to have two predominant goals here, one is to reduce the costs, and then the second is to recover the costs. So first, we're going to talk about, let's reducing, let's reduce some of our costs, and let's look at, and when we talk about reducing costs, we're looking at it from two, kind of two buckets, right? We want to reduce the costs to the users as a whole, that's what we're trying to do, and then we're looking at specific users, so we're saying we've got a bucket of users of a whole, but then within those users of a whole, we have some other little subset buckets, and we want to make sure that all these subset buckets are carrying their weight. So, I need to qualify some of the figures that you're going to look at here, is that we did not do an overhead cost allocation, which is quite a complicated and very expensive process. So we made a couple of assumptions, because we're trying to move into recovering this half a million dollars, we made an assumption that your benefit cost on your employees is equal to half of their base hourly rate, that is a very reasonable assumption, it would not, if we were to get the actual information, it would not change significantly. Then our second assumption is that your overhead is equal to 100% of your direct employee cost, so let me explain what overhead is, overhead is the cost of having that building for them to work in, having the computer, having the desk, having the paper, 100% of the direct employee cost is also not unreasonable, and if we were to do an overhead analysis, you may end up finding that it's more, but this is a good place to start. So our second, so now, so now that we've set the, the problem, right, that we're addressing, here's, here's our stages of development of how we're going after this. First, we want to update your ordinance, so we spent quite a bit of time with the supervisor, the clerk, the utilities director, your legal, your engineering, combing through your water and sewer ordinance and making sure that we had the authority to do things we want to do, and that will be coming to you shortly. The second step that we take is we want to recover the cost of activities which benefits specific users versus users of, as a whole, so really those different buckets, right? Then the third thing that we work on, and we're kind of working on these simultaneously, is we want to streamline the administrative billing and collection, we want to streamline actually everything we can so that we can reduce some costs in labor, and I will say that your prior utilities director, we started this process, I think, Steve, you might be our third, but the prior utilities director was pretty adamant that he thought they needed another administrative employee, and Steve has really put the brakes on that and said, no, first we're going to figure out if we can actually reduce some of these administrative tasks, so the staff isn't so overwhelmed with the work they have to do, and then we'll evaluate, because if you have to add another employee, now our costs have just gone up. So we're really driving hard to try and streamline some of these operations. The fourth thing that we are looking at is that you have a very powerful suite of financial products that, that SiO Township purchased, it is called BSNA software, and you have a lot of different modules there, and they all feed in together, it's a financial suite, and you own a module called a utility billing program, and it's very powerful. The program setup in there is a little clunky, it's not real easy for, for instance, for Steve to go in and pull down an information report, there's just a lot of cleanup that can happen in there, and so we're working on that as well, we can't pull data out of there real easily, as a matter of fact, Michael, who works with me as a data, he's a data geek, and so he can pull all this data out and sort it all over the place, but we don't really want on a day-to-day basis for, you know, that we need to have some kind of Excel guru in order to be able to pull a report out of this program, which is what's happening, so we're, we're streamlining, we're updating, we're cleaning that up as well, and Steve has actually assigned not only Sean, but Matt to work, Matt works with us on Wednesdays, and Matt has a lot of history of these accounts, and so things are going actually much quicker than I expected, so it's been very good. Once we're done with all of those pieces, then we're going to do a rate study and recommendation, and at that point in time, we're probably going to need some workshops with you, because we're going to give you some ideas, and we're going to need to get some direction. So then we'll implement the new rate structure, and once all of these pieces are done, Steve is pretty adamant that he wants a strong website interface for your customers, so those are the objectives that we are working under right now, and so this is kind of our presentation to you is because we're at a certain stage that we're ready to report out some of what we've accomplished. So in our ordinance review, which, you know, they're the, they're the laws and the basis upon which we can charge fees, and so that was why we needed to get those ordinances updated. So we're going to have authority to charge interest on unpaid balances, I'll deal, I'll talk to you a little bit more about that later, we're going to have a robust landlord affidavit, cost recovery, we're going to have a one-year look back on billing corrections, if we find that we have been underbilling somebody, we can go back a year and recover that, on the other hand, if we find we made a mistake in billing them, we would refund them for a year. We're going to have a simplified user equivalent table, and I'm going to ask you to put a pin in that, we will explain that to you when we get into the rates. So, these are some of the things that the ordinance achieved for us, so, but remember, the ordinance you're getting, engineering, cleaned up some stuff, legal, and finance, and utilities, so it's really, it's going to be a nice clean package. So the first thing I'd like to talk to you about are some of these specific user fees. So you have MDEQ, which is not MDEQ anymore, so it's Eagle, but they have requirements that your water system has to meet, they have testing requirements, and one of the things that they test is something called a cross-connection inspection, Steve, I don't know if you want to just explain to them briefly what that means?
Sure, so a cross-connection device is to ensure that contaminated water from a commercial facility does not backflow into the public water supply and cause a public health danger.
So this is very critical, and it's required, and we have to report it out to the state. So, the township actually sources with an outside vendor to accomplish this, right now, at today's pricing, it's costing you $11,484 to do this, we're recovering none of that cost, and so what we're proposing is that you have 437 commercial customers, we're not going to split it by how many cross-connections are in each customer, we're saying that you have 437 customers, we want to split this cost equally, so you would have your annual fee per customer, then we have some administrative costs on top of this, because we have to pay the bill, we have to look at the reports, file the reports, so our grand total annual cost per customer is $44, so we're recommending that we assess a fee on all of your commercial accounts of $12 a quarter, and that is to recover the MDEQ cost. So what I want to call out is that I know when we're talking about a half a million dollar problem, $11,000 or $12,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but once you start adding all these pieces, we could end up with, you know, $50,000, $100,000 toward that problem. So that's one thing, is that we do want to recover whatever costs we have, but the second thing is that when we go to your users, your broad base of users, and say to them, we have to raise your rates, we want to be able to tell them that we're raising your rates for services that you are getting, that we have already charged people for services that you are not getting, so it's part of our conversation with your customers, once we do have to raise their water and sewer rates, is that we can say to them, you're paying for the services you're getting, that everybody's paying for the specific services they're getting. So this is one of the fees that we're recommending, and I don't know, how do we want to handle questions here, Will, just let people jump in? I can't see hands, once I start talking, I'm Irish, right, I can just go all night, so, I'm not looking at anybody if they're raising hands, I'm in my zone, so, how can, how do you want to handle this? I'm taking suggestions here.
Well, I, I don't know if people want to just jump in with questions, I'm, I'm sort of at a loss, I can't see hands raised either.
I will say that Steve and I were hoping to present tonight, and then give you between now and the next meeting, to email us any questions or, you know, so that we're, this is a presentation, and we'd like to get moving on this, but bring a resolution to you at the next meeting.
Maybe that's the best way to handle questions then, is if people could sort of watch the presentation and listen, and then presumably we'll have the presentation to look at and review afterwards?
Yeah, so once, once this is done, I will email it to the clerk for her records and for distribution to the board and the website.
Okay, yeah, and then we'll have some time between now and the next meeting to think of questions and to relay them to you to be answered at our, at our next meeting.
Yeah, okay, so is everybody okay with that then, I'm just going to blow through?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so the second category we're looking at is equipment replacement, and predominantly right, right now what we're talking about is meters and electronic readers on meters, they're called MXUs, or, you know, they have other little names, but we replace these for three reasons, obsolescence, and if they're old, they're replaced at the township's cost, because we bill that into the rates, right? But sometimes we, we replace them at the customer's request, where they say, you know, I just want a bigger meter, or I want a smaller meter, or I'm putting in a sprinkler system and I want a meter for my sprinkler, or customer breakage, they went away for the winter, they forgot to turn off their water, and now their meter, now their meter broke, so we have three, three reasons that we go out to a customer's house. So our problem is that we don't have an automatic update in place when the prices increase, so we have a set price, and the set price we have right now is actually not covering our cost, so what we're going to propose in the resolution is that we say that the fee will just be the cost plus a 20% markup, so now we've put this in the responsibility and the ownership of your utilities director, that he can just change those fees, because he'll say, oh, the price went up, so this is the new price, and we'll be able to update it. Then a third category that we want to talk about is we have on-call services from the utilities department, and so what, what happens here is customers might need additional services, where they, they're having some plumbing done, they're having some remodeling, and they need their water turned on and turned off. We have two problems with this, one, we have a disparity in customer charges, which is interesting, because it kind of steps back to the comment by one of your board members about, he didn't want a disparity in charges for FOIA requests, but we have exactly that disparity in charges for GPW expenses, so right now what happens, and, so, okay, so that disparity comes in in after-hours, in after-hours charges, we charge the hourly rate of whichever person happens to answer the call, or is on duty, and so if it's the lower paid employee, then that customer pays a lower rate, if it's a higher paid employee, then that customer pays a higher rate, so, that, you know, that doesn't work at all. So just, then our problem number two is that what we're charging doesn't really even truly cover our costs anyway, so. So what you have here, so what we need to think about when we are looking at charges is we have call-ins during work, and then we have call-ins after work, so if they call us in after work, we have, the township guarantees a certain level of payment to your employees, your, you guarantee three and a half hours at time and a half plus mileage, so that's your base cost, when they walk, if they get in the car and they come and just, even if they have to work for 10 minutes, we are paying them three and a half hours at time and a half plus mileage, so that's what the township's policy is, then we've got to cover that if somebody's calling them. So, our solution for all of these little issues here is that we want to charge a fee that covers the highest direct labor cost, so now we don't have to worry about who's getting called out, and we're going to cover overhead, and we're going to cover mileage, and we need to cover this during work hours as well as after work hours, because during work hours, right now we're doing this for free, and if we go in and turn your water off, that is actually stopping us from doing work for every other user. So when we worked out the, you know, the cost of everything, what we're saying is that it costs the township about $100, it costs them $100 actually, for each hour of work for your utilities crew, so when they're called out to do a turn-on or a turn-off of water for a customer during work hours, we are proposing a $100 charge, if they are called out after hours, it's a $350 charge. Now, Steve actually did a little bit of comparison shopping to your next-door neighbor, the city, and their after-hours call-out is actually greater than $350, so you're kind of in the ballpark there, but right now our cost recovery isn't sufficient for this work. Then we have another area, we have hydrant and summer irrigation use, so the township allows users to access the water flow from the hydrants, and as you know, you have a lot of construction going on in your township, and contractors quite often will come and ask if they can use water from the hydrant, and the township allows this, but requires that you use a township meter, and you have to use a township meter because they buy special meters, they're expensive, but they have backflow preventions in them, so the same way that Steve said, you know, we have to check and make sure the water can't get back in and contaminate, his meters have backflow preventions on them, and they cost us some money. So we purchase the meter, we store the meter, we enter an invoice to the vendor, we bill them through the miscellaneous billing program, and we don't charge them anything for this, all we charge them for is the water usage, so we're not covering our costs there for that specific service. So here's what we're proposing, so the township meter is $1,500, the utility staff cost is 103.6, which is just almost hitting your turn-on, turn-off cost, right? The time involved is not that much different. Our current cost recovery- Our current cost recovery is zero. So we're recommending that we charge an administrative fee of $100. So you want to take the meter, we've got to sign it out to you, got to do all this paperwork. We're going to charge you $100. Plus, we're going to charge you $5 a day to recover the cost of our meter. So that's our proposal. We are doing some administrative process improvements too, as far as that goes. And I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit later, but I did put it down here just so you could see it. So then we also have a summer irrigation use. So these are condos or neighborhoods where they have, they have a common grounds and they have a sprinkler system there. And here, the township actually takes that meter out in the winter, puts it back in in the summer, and bills them for the water and doesn't charge them anything for that. So we're proposing that they get the $100 administrative charge on there, but not the meter charge because this is really kind of part of the whole, they're, they're a regular customer, right? But they will still, they will still pay our debt and our ready-to-serv charges, which they, which they do right now. But right now, we only charge them $50 to do all that work. So we're proposing we charge them $100 for, and then a $100 for taking it out and storing it. Let's talk about these final bill requests, which has actually been quite fun because Sean is, is out at the moment. And so all of the DPW are having to deal with these final bills requests. And as somebody who's worked in water and sewer billing for, gosh, I don't know, 20 years now, it's always fun for me when people actually get how time-consuming final bills are. Final bills are very, very time-consuming. Each request takes about 36.5 minutes to accomplish. When you talk about the administrative staff, the utilities guys reading it, all the paperwork involved, all the phone calls. It's about 36.5 minutes is the average to handle a final bill request. And Steve is sure that I've underestimated that. So final bills are, there's no ordinance in the township that requires them. There's no state requirement. Final bills are simply courtesy that we do for the buyer and the seller. Many title companies aren't even asking for final bills anymore. They're just prorating on the way they prorate taxes. A number of municipalities are also discontinuing doing the final bills. Oakland County, who does billing for a lot of their municipalities, they won't, they don't even do them. They don't even talk about them. So here's what we estimated. We went through and did your, did your low-cost analysis and said that really it's costing you $55.19 every time you get a final bill request. The number of reads that you had from April 2020 to March of 2021 were 195, so about four a week. Now, what I should caution you, because Steve is sure that number's wrong too, but that was COVID-related, right? So you didn't have a lot of movement. We're seeing that increase every month. The number of final bills are going up because people are now moving. So these final bills, just this group, cost the township $10,800, right? And spent 200 hours on that, of which we've recovered no cost at all. So our recommendation is that we're going to say that if you want a final bill, that it's going to cost $60, but you don't need one. And so we will have directions, Steve will have directions posted on the website that we can refer people to, to say, "Here's how you read your meter," if you want to do that, right? But if you really want us to come out and read it for you, it's going to be $60. Now let's talk about landlord subsidies. So landlords really are where a lot of your final bill requests come from and a lot of the movements in your water and sewer accounts come from. So right now, we provide landlords' final bills for free. We provide them copies of their bills for free. We turn their water on and off when they have tenants moving in and they might not have another one coming in for, you know, a week. We do that for free. We change the names on the accounts from one tenant to the next and get all those new phone numbers. We do all of that for free. So we're basically helping subsidize the landlord's business. So those are the services we provide. In addition, we have this landlord affidavit. It's a legal document. And what it allows the landlord to do is to transfer the responsibility for collecting the water and sewer bill from him, the property owner, to the township. So right now, under Michigan law, municipalities do not have to worry about doing collections like DTE or Consumers Energy. We don't have to worry about it because if you don't pay your bill, we're putting a lien on your property. It's going on a DAX rule. And if you don't pay your taxes, it's going up for sheriff's sale. And when the sheriff sells the property, we're ultimately going to get our money. A landlord affidavit stops that process. And it basically says, "We don't have any right to recover our money from the property." So now we've got to worry about this. It puts us in a position of having to do collections that we don't do, right? So this is not our business. So our solution is threefold. So first of all, we want to put a lot of information on the website so we can say to the landlords, "You don't need us to get a copy of a bill for you. Just go out there and it's very easy. It's an easy link, get it yourself," right? There's a link out there right now, but they seem to complain about it. So we also want to charge them $60. So if you want us to read your meter because you've got a new tenant coming in, you can read it yourself or pay us $60. If you want us to really mail you a copy of a bill, we need to charge you $2 for that because we've got to do the postage, we've got to print it out, we've got to take your phone call. Also, as we talked about before, we're going to have the $100 to turn your water on and off. And then the name changes on the account. We are not going to worry about putting your tenant name on the account unless we have to. So our default will just be it's a resident name, right? Right now, your administrative staff person spends a lot of time running down names for accounts. So that's step two. Step three is we're going to put in a pretty strong landlord affidavit process. If you want to file a landlord affidavit, which Scioto Township does not have a lot of these right now. But if you want to file a landlord affidavit, it's going to cost you $100 because we've got to keep the affidavit on file. We now have record retention. We've got to convert your, your, your account so that we know there's a landlord affidavit on it. And then we want a deposit on this account in case the, your tenant doesn't pay. So similar to DTE Energy, if you don't have a history with DTE Energy and you want to open a brand-new account, you have to put quite a significant deposit on there until you build up your credit history. Well, we're not going to have an opportunity to do a credit check on these tenants. So we want at least a $500 deposit on the account, which the landlord can make, and he can take his part in what works out with his tenant. Or alternately, we could say whatever the average residential bill is, which right now ends up being about $370 a quarter, I think. So this is how we want to make sure the landlord affidavit and the landlord subsidies are kind of taken care of so that the rest of your users aren't having to pay for that.
Colleen, can I just check in and see sort of where we're at in terms of the remaining items to be covered?
Um, yeah, I think I'm in pretty good shape. Maybe we're two-thirds of the way through?
Yeah.
I understood this was 20, 25 minutes? It's getting, we're at 35 and we're two-thirds there. I want to encourage us to move quickly to get through this, given the late hour we're getting into.
Yeah, I'm on slide 18 and I have 27. So I think we've addressed the more complicated ones. So thank you for the time check. I will move quickly. We also have non-sufficient funds, so there are tasks involved if somebody's check bounces as your treasurer would let you know. You don't really have a lot of this happening in the township, but there is a charge to, there is a, there is a cost to this. So we're recommending that we charge a $30. Also, we have delinquent accounts. So currently, the township charges a one-time late fee of 10%, but then once you've gotten that 10%, you know, you have no incentive to pay. We don't charge you a late fee at all. So we're recommending, and the ordinance gives you the opportunity now to charge a 1% charge per month, which is what the DAX does do. So right now, because we don't charge that, we're losing approximately $12,000 a year. So in addition, we have a delinquent accounts that are rolled to taxes and there are administrative costs laid into this. Once we go for the vote, your treasurer might, will likely have some other recommendations here, but we are, we are recommending that we transfer a fee for rolling your account to taxes. There are, it's not a significant amount of time, but there is some time involved in this. So I'm done, we're done with the fees now. So we just want to talk real quickly about some of the operational efficiencies because we're hoping to move into these pretty quick. We want to reduce your billing cycles so that we can increase your time available for account analysis. These are all the tasks that go into doing a billing cycle where it says times one, that would be a reduction. Right now, you're doing it times three, right? So we actually, the township, bills its customers quarterly, but you bill a third each month. So you're always billing, like you're always billing. You only have about 3,000 customers and these can all be handled in a single cycle. So by combining them all together, we get some efficiencies of scale and we reduce some time. A second area that we're looking at for efficiencies is some electronic payment capabilities. Right now, you have, you use option two right now, which has a fee to the customers and a fee to the township. We are recommending that you implement option one, which is actually built into your software program. There is, it's free to the customers and it reduces the administrative time spent on bank records. And the cost for each transaction is about the same as receiving the checks. Then the two other ones we want to talk about are, we want to charge, we want to reduce, these are just time savings here, I'm sorry, I don't know how to, these are just some time savings with how we're actually processing paperwork. And we want to keep it within that billing system versus sending it out to another software program. And I'm, I'm done. So, how long did it take? Actually, I thought 30 minutes is what I had said, but.
I, I, so, good job, Colleen.
Thank you for, for the very thorough presentation. We could probably take down share screen now?
Yep, I'm doing that right now.
Okay, thank you.
And so then Steve and I are available for questions and Will, he'll be bringing a resolution to you at the next board meeting. And thank you all very much for, for your attention.
Thank you, Colleen, and thank you, Steve. So that brings us to item J3, which is a possible action on the report on the condition of the fire fleet and authorization to repair tanker. And given, given the late hour, I'm wondering if we could sort of rely on the materials, sort of lean on the materials more? I mean, if there's, if there, if there's something that you want to highlight, Andy, that would, you know, maybe that would be the thing to do rather than to, you know, sort of go through everything.
Yeah, definitely do not need to go through anything. Give you a real brief synopsis of what we do. Annually, we have our vehicle serviced, full oil change, full inspection, DOT inspection, all that type of stuff. Make sure they're all compliant and safe on the roads. And along with that, we get a list back of recommended repairs. They're categorized, one, I'm taking the vehicle out of service to get it done, to four, which might be a light bulb being out that we'll take care of ourselves at some point in the future because it's very minor. Gave you a rundown of age of our vehicles, mileage on the vehicles, mechanical condition stuff. Our engine one's, our primary engine runs on many of our motor vehicle accidents, medical calls, that type of stuff. Engine two's primarily in reserve. That vehicle causes us some problems. It doesn't meet our needs anymore. It only fits two people in the cab. And we staff with either three or four during the day. Our water tanker is 20 years old and is getting near the end of its lifetime. NFPA recommends it be put in reserve after about 15 years and eliminated from the fleet at 25. We're coming up within that five-year time period where we'll have to replace it. Overall, big picture, we do have quite a bit of repairs that we do annually and they're expensive vehicles, so they could cost quite a bit to repair. In front of you today, our tanker does need some more repairs than usual. Some of this we were expecting from last year's report. And with that, I have detailed in the memo I sent you the, the items I'd like to get repaired at a cost of $14,050. We use RNR, our truck repair. They, they're a full-service repair facility. With that, any questions, board members?
I don't see any, but I'm only seeing some.
Jane has her hand up, Will?
Yep, sorry.
So Chief Hoad, how is this paid for? Is there a fund that's sort of set up over time that anticipates these kind of expenditures?
Repair, replace.
With the water and sewer issues, looking at sort of firehouse funding, how we did that whole construction? I'm really looking for evidence that we are strategically planning for these big expenditures and we've got the disciplines in place to accrue the funds to anticipate these expenditures.
So I'll say this year, for smaller equipment, we began funding, pre-funding those repair, those replacements. As of today, we do not have a mechanism for pre-funding our apparatus. It's definitely something I need to, we need to work on, but it's a big number.
Yeah, it's, it's not just the fire stuff, it's the water and sewer stuff.
Huge problem.
I have had an unease about this for as long as I've been watching this township.
And it's, you're absolutely right, Jane. It's something that we're just starting, is longer-term financial planning, capital planning. You're absolutely right. The water fund and sewer fund didn't get in trouble overnight. It's been years.
I'd love to be in a position where we're putting $100,000 away for apparatus replacement. I'd like to get our budget there.
Additional?
This is not, this is not you, Chief Hoad. We, this township, has to get a handle on this.
Agreed.
It's been way too long, lots of good intent. We need to get a handle on this. Seriously.
Are there additional comments from other trustees? Would someone like to, wait, I'm sorry, this is an action item. I guess we could make the model motion and then we could see if there's public comment. Would someone like to make the model motion?
I'll move the model motion.
Moved by Jerome, support by Noel. Are there public comments on the repair of the fire truck?
Rob Paddington, followed by Gillian Carey. Rob?
My question is, is there any point in applying that $14,000 repair cost? You also said in the document that once the tanker goes, you're going to have to eliminate it from the fleet. Is there any point in applying that 14 grand towards a new vehicle? Since it's 20 years old, it's going to last five more years. It might need more repairs in the next five years. How does that work in the township plan? Thank you.
Yes, good question. In that five years when we need to remove the vehicle from the fleet, it needs to be replaced. That vehicle is what moves water out to our rural areas. So it is, it's necessary to not only our operations, but mutually that we provide our neighbors, which they in turn provide us.
Thank you. Next comment, Gillian Carey, followed by Anne Streeter.
Hello. Regarding, I'm a little amused that there's some, I guess, surprise about all of these costs because for, yeah, this has been going on for a long time and we have new people on board. Clerk Jessica has really worked hard to bring the township from the stone ages. Anne Chief Hoad has been amazing. So, and especially with the fire department because I have So, and especially with the fire department because I have visited quite a few times and I have voiced for the fire department and the terrible conditions they have worked in for years. And we have paid into a millage for 10 years and they were working in a building that was literally falling apart. So I'm kind of shocked that you're shocked about all of this. So I definitely support the fire department with whatever they need. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see no other public comment on this item. Will?
Unless there are further comments from members of the Board of Trustees, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Porteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Moore.
Item J4 is the possible action, the distribution of the draft master land use plan to adjacent communities. And this is a necessary step in the process for approving our mass, our update to our master plan. There's a 63-day requirement for, to allow that time for adjacent communities to comment on the draft master plan. And the draft master plan is available on the township's website and also everyone, all the members of the board received a hard copy. And we have with us Laura Krebs from Carlisle-Wartman, our planning consultant firm, to introduce this topic.
Evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? So this draft master plan is a result of over a year of work with the Planning Commission. We started this pre-COVID and have been moving a little slower than we would like and had to kind of revamp our public input process in the beginning to a virtual model. So we're really proud of the way we kind of came together and had to be creative with some of that public input process to come up with this draft document for you. The Planning Commission has been working very hard over the last several months. They've had multiple meetings that, where they focused specifically on this document to pull this draft together. And we feel that we've put, we've addressed all of their issues and concerns that they had raised in the preliminary documents. This is the next step, as Doug put in his memo to you that's in your packet. We are, sorry, I'm losing words, it's after, you know, after nine o'clock, so pardon my stumbling a little bit here. In his memo, we, we talked about the Planning Enabling Act and that's really the authority that the Planning Commission has to put together the master plan. And there's a very specific process that we go through in, in drafting the master plan and then providing it to the public for distribution. So the Planning Commission has put together the master plan, we are now asking the board to, to distribute it, for their permission to distribute it to adjacent municipalities, to residents and anyone else who would like to make public comment. The planning law requires that we provide 63-day comment period. After that 63 days, the Planning Commission will also hold a public hearing and any public comments that the Planning Commission wants to incorporate into the document, they will do so after the public comment and the public hearing period. In the past, the, at least in the last couple of times, the Planning Commission has adopted the master plan, the Township Board has opted not to. But if this board decided that they want to have that authority, they could do so by resolution. So you'd have to adopt a resolution stating that you were also going to adopt the master plan. And we can, we can discuss that further with, with Doug and I, if that's something that the SIO wants to do. But again, in the past, that hasn't been the case, it was just the Planning Commission that, that adopted it. So we're really happy, I think Jackie's here, if she wants to speak as a Planning Commissioner, but I think they've worked really hard and I think they're really looking forward to moving forward and, and getting some public comments so we can finalize the, the master plan.
Thanks, Laura. Are there questions for Laura or Jaclyn? Did you want to segue right into your, your comments as a Planning Commissioner?
Thank you. Well, first of all, just to thank Laura and Doug and Carlisle-Wartman for their efforts. It's been a long review and I know with the pandemic, I wasn't involved in that part of the process, but I know there were a lot of steps extra this time. And then with a lot of new planning commissioners, we've, we've all been working hard to get up to speed on the process. So I'm, I, I think we've, we're, the Planning Commission is excited about sharing this new draft. We, we're really trying to push forward on some sustainability initiatives to sort of lay the groundwork for more sustainability in the township and, and also sort of systemize how we're thinking about things like community benefit and, and planned unit developments and to, you know, think about fire services into the future and, and really lay a more comprehensive groundwork or, or sort of taking a step beyond what was in the last plan. So we're eager to get this out there and to have the board review it and comment it and to hear from our neighboring communities. We're trying to work hard to meet with Dexter as well about some joint issues of concern around the Baker Road area. We want to make sure that we're coordinating well and are good neighbors. And I, I guess I would just say that we're all hoping that the board will move forward with getting this distributed.
Are there other comments from Clerk Flintoff?
Just a, a quick question. So with the, the public that's listening now, the SIO residents, question either Jackie or Laura, is, do, does the Planning Commission want, want feedback from our residents? Kind of, I'm, I'm just, it's a process question, you know, is this just to be distributed for comment from other jurisdictions or is it also from residents? What's kind of the ask of our residents at this point?
So I'll take this one, Jackie. We would ask that the master plan draft be put on the SIO Township website and there would be a place where they could email myself or Doug with any comments that they would have. And that would be in addition to, you know, during that 63-day comment period. And then there would still be a publicized public hearing notice at a Planning Commission meeting immediately after that 63-day period. We're not going to wait another month, we're going to make sure that that public hearing occurs at the very next meeting after that 63-day comment period so that we're continuing to move forward and that any comments, you know, we're, are together and we're not, you know, prolonging this public comment period in, in any way. So we want to make sure the news gets out there and there's a very, a known timeline when that public comment would have to occur. Thank you.
Are there other comments or questions from members of the Board of Trustees? Trustee Jerome?
I just had a quick comment and thank you. And I do want to acknowledge the length of this process since I actually was on the Master Plans Subcommittee when it was first initiated as a Planning Commissioner over a year ago. But what I really want to do is really thank Carlisle-Wartman and the Planning Commission specifically because I think they really grabbed hold of some of the initial foundational elements that we were trying to incorporate, but really grabbed those and took them to their full fruition and I look forward to reviewing the new master plan. But I wanted to thank them for their efforts, especially as new, predominantly, an all-new Planning Commission, so it was, it was a lot to take on.
Thanks. Are there other comments from trustees? Are there comments from the public?
Please raise your Zoom hand. I see none.
Would someone like to make the?
Oh, I got a Zoom hand, sorry.
Sorry.
Make the model motion afterwards.
Okay.
Excuse me. I see one, Pat Stein. Pat?
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, I thought we were public comments after the discussion.
No, no problem. Thank you, Pat. I thought I was too slow. Phil?
So, no, no public comment? Would someone like to make the model motion? Trustee Jerome?
I'll move the model motion.
Moved by Jerome, support by Porteau. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Porteau?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Thank you, Laura.
Well, that does bring us, and thank you, Laura, thanks for staying with us. That does bring us to public comment at the conclusion of the meeting. So once again, members of the public have up to three minutes on any matter that they would like to address, on which they would like to address the Board of Trustees. And trustee Noel will be our trustee timekeeper.
If you're interested in public comment, please raise your Zoom hand. First is Pat Stein, followed by Daryl DePesto. Pat Stein?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank you for such a good meeting. Kudos to every member of the board. Have a good night.
Thanks, Pat. Next up is Daryl DePesto, followed by Anne Streeter.
Hey, Daryl, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, so Daryl DePesto, I'm at 6821 Bridgewood Hills Drive here in Dexter. And so I'm glad to hear that we are going to work to harmonize the noise ordinances. I think, you know, noise as SIO grows is just going to continue to be a pain point for the township and so I'm really encouraged to hear that, you know, there's going to be some due diligence there to go back and look at that. I would ask that there's some consideration at the Planning Committee level or possibly at the, at the board level for a consideration of a moratorium on what happens with new conditional use applications. Fortunately or unfortunately, I became intimately involved in this, in learning about noise ordinances because Brian Heron had a conditional use permit that was recently, you know, declined at the Planning Commission level. But in my due diligence in that process, you know, there's current ordinances on the books, 36311 and 36312, and then there's of course the 36149 D8A that cites the 65 decibels, which are not congruent. And, you know, I ended up having to hire sound engineering consultants to understand sort of the implications of all that. And low and behold, you know, these ordinances are not compatible with each other. In fact, they're in direct contradiction, contradiction each other. You know, so it's money, you know, it's time, it's effort. So I'm glad that there's going to be a process moving forward. But currently, as it stands, as alluded to, both ordinances are ill-considered and overly lenient for a rural environment and no criteria is allocated for annoyances. I've done a lot of work, if anyone wants to contact me, I've, I've got some additional resources I'd be happy to share. You know, sound is complex, especially in a rural environment throughout the day. I can tell you that just based on where I live. You know, the, the, the sound consultants basically said, you know, you wouldn't think twice about 70 decibels of insect noise, but rap music radiating from a distant source at 55 dBAs would be obvious and annoying. So there's just a lot to go into this and it's very complex. You know, and then from a, from a monitoring standpoint, you know, they referenced me numbers anywhere from $800 to $1,400 per event for fully calibrated events because if push came to shove, I felt like that's what I was going to have to do to, to, to make a point. So a lot of enforcement needs consideration without a doubt. No good ordinance, especially around noise and annoyances, is really going to be worth anything if it doesn't have any teeth in it. And, you know, that really should come with not only the fines, I mean, these venues can make tens of thousands of dollars per event. So a hundred dollar fine, 200, $500 fines aren't really much of a deterrent. Really, there should be a first offense, fine and a warning, second offense, suspension of activities for some set period of time. And then after that offenses become, you know, revoking. And of course, yep, and I'm happy, you know, to, you know, to suggest other things and, I mean, I think there should be some adjudication or mediation, but there has to be a process that works for all residents and that's so important. So thank you again and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Daryl. Next up is Anne Streeter. Anne?
Hi, this is actually Dennis Streeter. Are you able to?
Hi, Dennis.
Hi, there's a few of us together here, so if we can maybe get a block of time for each of us.
Three each.
Take that. Mm-hmm. So first of all, I want to say is encouraged, we've been through this discussion on the agricultural ordinance for quite a while now and encouraged by the items that were brought up by the board today to look into further. And second, the thoughts of Mr. DePesto as well, especially related to the noise, we've experienced that ourselves, being inconveniently located between the two existing barns. I think that there are several ways that it can be monitored, you know, maybe less costly and more costly, that I think should be the board's choice is what you look at this. I know, I just want to share comments from a police officer that came to our house last, the year before, when events were going on fairly regular, noting that they were able to monitor without a device just by being able to know what a reasonable amount of noise was and from experience in that regard. So don't necessarily discount that as a possibility either. And would also say that if there's any opportunity for the neighbors to join in this discussion, I know that there'd be a number of us that would be more than willing to sit down and discuss our concerns on these issues. I think also that we would be interested in knowing if the changes that you're proposing, and we also agreed with Mr. Luhan's summary on what defines an enclosed barn venue. I think that's a very important thing that we've observed here over the years, that when doors are closed, things become very reasonable in the neighborhood at that stage for noise. But there are other issues to monitor aside from noise. The number of people attending these events, the parking that goes on along the road, the orderly entrance and exit of vehicles. I mean, there's just a wealth of things that go on beyond noise. So I'd hate to see things just focus solely on that. But Mr. Luhan's summary from July of 2020, I thought caught the essence of the enclosed building very well. And I think really that's, that, those were the items that I was hoping to discuss with you tonight and appreciate your attention to this matter.
Thanks, Dennis.
My name is Anne Streeter, Dennis's wife, and we live across the street from two party barns. The purpose of the agricultural is to provide a supplemental income to a real farmer and not commercial operations. And that is what happened with both of these party barns. They're getting at least $15,000 a weekend and that's not the cost, that's $15,000 plus every weekend, plus during the week, because they can have a thing during the week. We've been dealing with these party barns for 13 years now and we continue to have problems even recently. So this weekend, there was a complaint filed with your ordinance officer and we haven't heard anything back from that. And then there was also a complaint, so Misty Farm was blasting away, it was rocking away. So it's still going on. All this stuff is happening. They're going, they're not following the rules, they're not following the guidelines and they're just laughing at SIO, I'm sure, that you'll never do anything to them. So since SIO has not monitored for 13 years, so, and we have done complaints, we have come to all these meetings, if SIO decides not to monitor in the future, why don't you just delete number eight of the agricultural tourism? That will get rid of any of those kind of venue-type things and eliminate it. If you still want to go on, then I would suggest that $5,000 escrow is not enough. You need a SIO person to actually be there the whole time because they will just be nice while someone's there and whatever. So I figured 5,000 annually is what you're asking, but they have 35 weeks, two events per week, times two barns, that's 140 events that we have to, neighbors have to put up with. And the onus of complaints is on us neighbors. It should be on SIO since you're the one that approved this. We have been living, Dennis's family has been living here for four generations and, you know, in SIO Township, this is ridiculous. We, we were the first before anybody else came around. the first before anybody else came around. Another thing that I want to bring up is, oh, okay. Oh, okay. What is this? Oh, yes. And then on top of it, Fruitig is sitting across the road from our driveway this weekend. And he kind of harassed some of my friends. And I don't appreciate that either. So the transfer of ownership, I don't agree with that. That should be a reapply application. You don't know who these owners are going to be. And we have filed complaints and we haven't heard anything back from that.
Ann, I'm sorry. It's time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is anybody else there on the line with you?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I'm Jamie Wengler. I live right across the street from, from, from the, from both the party barns.
Hi, Jamie.
Hi. How you doing? Thanks for working on this with us. I don't think they should be able to, to, I don't think the owner, I think the owner should be on site the whole time. I'm worried about some kind of loophole coming up later. Is there, there's been so many loopholes. This has went way farther than we ever expected it. And I think if I'm going to enjoy the music during the week, they should enjoy the music. And they, they should be at the house. And I think that's because I'm worried about another company maybe getting in there and just playing some kind of game. And that's what it's been the whole way. And I did think if they're going to have a party, they should be at the party. And another thing I'm worried about is to transfer the permit to another owner. They should reapply. I don't think that, that, because this whole thing's supposed to have been about the barns. There isn't supposed to be, there's supposed to only been, you know, it's, we don't got enough time to even talk about it. This is, this went way past what it's supposed to have been. And I, I would be glad to talk to you with this, with the approvals, if you would like, at any time. But what I'm worried about is on this transfer of ownership, you know, I think that we, that they should reapply and they should have another reboot, just like we did in the first place. That's what we done. We had, we voted it in. It's supposed to have been twice a month. And it's supposed to, and, and when we voted in the next, the next thing we signed for at the Valley is supposed to have been only, she said she should never have it at the same time. She gave her word. And it's supposed to have been for small parties. And this thing's been over the top. And then I just talked to her recently. And, and she said that she's fixing up this barn in the center. Because the first one they built that barn in the center is supposed to have been for holding hay. And then they tried to put up some kind of a guest house hotel there out of it. And then instead of just dropping it and being cool about it, and just eat the bar, and they can't do that. They got, they're putting, they said that, they said she's making a retreat for her family. But I've, but I've been seeing people working there nonstop for over a year now. So I know that it's got to be over 100 grand to put into it. I don't think they need 100 grand to spend to have their family come and visit them. And that's why I'm, I'm just concerned because I think she's getting ready to sell it. And so then we're going to have two different owners we got to deal with. Right now, we're dealing with, with the approvals. So if you got somebody that buys this land and they're expecting to make money off of it. So then we're going to, we're going to have a whole new rash of problems. And I'm not going to be nearest friendly. I've been, this, they promised they would get rid of Misty Farms eight years. I'm sorry. Am I done?
30 seconds.
Okay. But anyway, um, but they mostly got rid of Misty Farms. They're supposed to have been not two at the same time. It's supposed to have been two, it's supposed to have been two, twice a month. She gave her word on all this stuff. And everything keeps changing. And this has been going for like 13 years. So, so right now, I'm just getting worried because, because now we're going to open up more, more, it's, it's not been the way it's supposed to went. And there's worse things I can tell you, but I don't even want to get into that. But, but I just want to, I want to be cordial with them and I would love to talk with them, with you, and get this thing fixed once and for all. I would love to get this thing done. This is going on. You know, I don't think, I don't think they're ever going to comply. They haven't yet. And unfortunately, they haven't been truthful. And I hate to say that. I don't want to, I don't want to.
Jamie, it's, it's time. Your time's up. Thank you so much for your comments.
Okay. You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right. Other hands. I see next up Rob Pattinson, followed by Harvey Summers. Rob?
Thank you. I would, I think it's important that we once again remind the board of their duty, that we have residents near the party barns that, the established party barns that are already have, and have been having problems for years, 13 years. I didn't know it had been there that long. And until the township can manage and enforce issues with the current party barn, there shouldn't be any thought whatsoever of new ones coming in. And this is where the duty comes in. You have a duty to protect those residents. And you also have a duty to protect the residents down at the railroad, Delhi Mills issue. Serious damage has been done there to that community. And this very divisive issue has blown up. And I think it's important that you remember that you have a duty to help those people resolve this and work it out. It seems very unfair that they're suffering because of inattention in past years for the noise issues and mismanagement in terms of the current issues with the road SADs. I would like to encourage you to help them. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Harvey Summers. Harvey?
Harvey Summers, 2129 Autumn Hill Drive. I've listened to discussions of the operation of Misty Farms for a number of years. And I'm still struggling with a basic concept that I don't understand. If the basis of the ordinance under which the Misty Farms operation was granted its license, if the basis of the ordinance was that this was to supplement actual agricultural-based income, an operation of an agricultural farm that had at least 50% of its income from agriculture, if the basis hasn't been met, at what point are the trustees obligated to close down the operation? I don't know if I've misunderstood any part of this, but as I understand the ordinance, they haven't met the basis of the ordinance's requirement that the supplemental income be less than the agricultural income of the farm operation. So the trustees have skirted, as far as I can tell, this issue. And maybe I don't understand it, but I'm really confused that it's gone on for 13 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. Any other interested public? I see no other interested public. Will?
I just wanted to share in response to some of the comments that we actually, there was a letter sent to the owners of Misty Farm, Misty Valley venues, letting them know that there was a violation of the ordinance. So that letter went on June 1st. So that people may not be aware of that, but, but the township has taken at least an initial step to cite the, the venues for a violation. This, this had to do with parking in the right of way. So if there are no further public comments, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
So moved by Jerome, support by Vogel. Please call the roll.
Sorry, sorry. Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.